Public who are here to speak and I will shortly introduce you and you can have your say at the meeting. Can I first of all just take us through the agenda items? Yola, do we have any apologies for absence, please?
No, we don't, no.
Thank you. We are expecting another member to join us very shortly but having technical problems, so we're hopeful that they will be able to join very soon. We have no parts two, so we don't need to think in terms of an agenda item for that. We don't need to worry about that. Any declarations of interest from members, please, on any of the items that we will be discussing this evening? No? Thank you. Any dispensations to receive or consider this evening? Okay, anyone have any problems? Have you all had the chance to have a look at the minutes of last meeting on the 18th of June? And if so, are you happy for me to sign them as a true record of the meeting? Is everyone in agreement with that, please? That's great. councillor Heath, councillor Wrigley, you both, thank you. Thank you. That's a majority that are happy for me to sign, Yola. Okay, can I hand over to you for any correspondence that we've had, please?
Yes, let me just unmute myself. Okay, so applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. 12A Port Road, single-storey rear extension and single-story front porch. 28 Cofton Hill Cockwood, alterations to outbuilding including provision of pitched roof and roof lights, French doors and Juliet balcony. 46 Cofton Hill Cockwood, variation of condition two and removal of condition three on planning permission. 18 oblique, Aro double two nine eight oblique F U L, replacement dwelling to amend house design and landscaping. Applications granted contrary to this council's recommendation. 159 Exeter Road, dwelling in garden.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now, if we can now vote to defer business for comment by the members of the public, I know we have two members of the public, can you let me know who they're here to speak for on behalf of, Yola?
We've got Mr Gibson who's speaking on behalf of Dawlish History Group and the other gentleman, I'm not sure, I believe councillor Morehead is aware.
Okay. Shall we take them in alphabetical order then? So Mr Gibson first, if that's okay? Welcome to the meeting. Oh. You've muted yourself again, Keith, if you, thank you. Yes, we can hear you. I believe you have five minutes to speak, so thank you.
Right, this is in connection with the Network Rail's application for the sea wall from the viaduct to coastguards. The local history group has submitted a document written by David Allen Akar, secretary, to the planning committee. And if I just read how it starts, "The Dawlish Local History Group welcomes the new plans for the increased resilience of the sea wall overall, but is concerned about the great loss of railway heritage." And the loss of heritage, we know that a lot is going to disappear under concrete. And that is a fact that we just have to accept. But a lot of stonework is being planned to be reused for seating from the boathouse, the coastguard's boathouse. We feel that any stonework that is recovered and then not used should be kept for the use in the town for other heritage projects. And particularly, the bottom of the steps from the bridge, there's some rather nice stonework as you just leave the last bit of steps having turned through 90 degrees. And we feel that if that stonework can be saved, it could be reinstalled at the new bottom of the steps to keep the same look. And it would be a great shame to lose that stonework, it's very nicely cut. Also in saving things, the gas light, old gas light posts that are supporting the platform at the viaduct end of the station, there's a plan to use them for wave finding. I can't remember the word actually now, but not quite sure what it means. But again, if they're not all used, perhaps they can equally be saved for the town to use possibly for any projects. Also, in the heritage statement, there's no real mention of the fact that on the other side of the car park at the station, there's still a section of wall from the atmospheric railway pumping station. I know this doesn't come directly into the work that they're carrying out, but it will probably be in an area that they use for store and the like, as a yard. And I think it would be important that Network Rail are aware of the historic significance of that bit of wall. It's a present covered by ivy. It would be rather nice if it was cleaned off at some stage. And if they're planning to put boards up with information, that a board highlighting that as being the only bit that is left from the atmospheric railway. The history group, along with the museum, are planning to create a photographic and video archive of things as they are at present, so that when it is all swallowed up in concrete, then we still know what it was like. There will still be some features that we do see, thankfully. And I have to say just personally, I think the design looks very good. It's a modern design, but that's, you know, it's going to improve the facilities for people using the station. And I know myself, when I got off a train from London with a large bag and having to take it over the bridge, I could have done with a lift. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Gibson. Okay, shall we move on to the second speaker, please? Mr Sillifant, thank you. If you could introduce yourself and what item you're speaking on behalf of. I think I know, but please do so.
I'm Peter Sillifant of one Shilling Gate close. Most councillors have seen or heard from me before. It just follows on from the town council meeting on the 1st of July, when the Teambridge local plan was deferred to this meeting. My interest is in the protection of Oakland's wood. At the moment, the draft of revision indicates that the cemetery, the wood around the Orchard Manor School and part of the wood to the west of Shilling Gate Close are to be outside the settlement area. So my query is why not include all of the wood around Shilling Gate Close in that category, i.e. outside of the settlement area? Councillor Gary Taylor has pointed out that the wood will have some protection as recreational use and agrees that parts are outside the settlement area, leaving a large part inside. Councillor Linda Petherick has informed me that she has spoken to the Teambridge officer with a responsibility for the review and that the officer proposes making a site visit, possibly in the company of an arborist and/or an ecologist. So I'd be grateful therefore if the committee could bear in mind these views in considering the Teambridge local plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming forward. Okay, and that, after the completion of the public speakers, we now do come on to that item and the Teambridge local plan review that was deferred by a full town council on 1st of July 2020. Have we as yet had Mr Taylor, councillor Taylor, join the meeting at all? No, we haven't, have we? Okay, so we need to carry on anyway. So the decision of the full council was that we should, it was going to be deferred to us as the planning committee to consider whether we want to submit a response to the local plan review. So to my mind, we have to consider if that's our first stage, do we want to at least put something to the you know, have our say, as it were, as a town council? I'm not going to ask for a majority, I guess, but I'm assuming that the majority of members present are happy to do so. Can we have maybe a quick show of hands that you are happy for us to go ahead and to form a response here? Thank you. Okay, some majority there. Yola, I think our public speakers are welcome to listen and watch online, but I think at the moment they need to be in the waiting room. I don't want to be disrespectful to them at all, but just mention that to you. Okay. So really, I want to be led by yourselves, what your thoughts are, and I'm hoping that members have been researching this and know where they want to go with this. So have we got some ideas that we're able to submit at this time, or is there anyone, I'm not seeing anyone who's wanting to speak right now, but is there anyone who would like to bring something to the table, so to speak? Councillor Morehead?
I did put my
Yeah, thank you.
IT hand up, but I don't think
Yes, you did, thank you.
Okay. What I would just ask, Madam Chair, is if you could take us through it so that if under each category, if there's something that we've read that we wish to say, we could do it logically. Otherwise, you'll be chopping around and jumping about.
Yeah, that is a logical way forward. Let me just update myself with, and I haven't got one to hand right in front of me, which isn't good, but I will quickly do exactly that.
If I may, Madam Chair. I know the minute hasn't actually been written yet, because I think they were still in doing the town council minutes, but the clerk did advise me that his understanding was that members were going to be sending their views to the committee, so a response could be synthesised. But I don't, I've not
Synthesise, I like that word.
Yes, I did too. And I am, yes, I don't know whether any have come to you at all, but certainly that's
I haven't just yet. I was hopeful, I was hopeful I would have something through there from that point of view. I've just made a few notes. But, and could kick off really, because the one thing that I wanted to say was about the wording and to tighten up the wording of the to make sure that the, let's have a look for the actual words I put down. To ensure the wording of the plan is clear and concise and most importantly is not open to misinterpretation. And I know that's a real kind of semantic to start us off, but that's that's something that I was quite concerned about. There are some holes in the knitting, so to speak. I hope you know what I mean from that.
I think we've got councillor Taylor attempting to join at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, sorry, excuse me, Chair, is it worthwhile just giving, making sure we all know quite what we're looking at here? Because this is only part of the local plan review and it's the first part. It's just worth, I think, putting for the record that this is the initial and immediate part of the local plan review. It is looking at the policies that are, the formation of the local plan. It's not in any way looking at housing numbers or sites. So none of that is up for review at this stage. The vast majority of the alterations in in the local plan policies are intended to improve things like the ability to tackle climate change through local plan policies, the ability to preserve and protect the environment. And the one thing that is in there, which Mr Sillifant did refer to, is the affirmation of the village envelopes, the settlement envelopes.
Yes.
Other than that, it's all down to different policies in different areas, trying to build a better control for the development within the district. This was put together with a working group at Teambridge District Council. I think councillor Taylor was involved in that as portfolio holder for planning. I know councillor Linda Petherick was involved, I think, as part
Yeah, councillor Lincoln Brabry was as well.
And councillor Lincoln Brabry was. But just within those, that area, this is now, you know, we're looking at the wordings and the impact of those changes to the policies. And it's nothing at this time to do with any areas or numbers of development.
Okay. Well, I've got two people who have their blue hands up. Councillor Martin Heath, if you'd like to say, and then I'll bring you in Val as well, because I know you've already mentioned something a moment ago.
Yes, I'm just looking on my other computer on the summary of changes on page eight, climate change. And it does actually sort of link into Member of the Republic and Shilling Gate and the trees. It does actually say that they're hoping to have tree cover, plant areas increased by at least 5% over the period to 2040 for sustainable carbon development, et cetera. So I think one of our responses should definitely be any form of woods, and obviously the one mentioned before is definitely part of it. We can't think of one hand having a policy, it says we want to increase trees. And on the other hand, pulling down and doing development is total nonsense. So I think we will be certainly right even quoting that page eight. That this area should definitely be preserved for sure. So when we do our response, we should include that.
Are you saying that as part of the climate, as part of the climate change part, as I understand you, councillor?
Yeah, yes, because as councillor Wrigley has just said, you know, there's lots of stuff in there, but they're not talking about specific fields or plots. So we can't really comment on too much, but the sort of overall strategy of various things on there, and climate change, well, obviously is one of them. Which they're saying in lots of ways what they want to do, but it's like in a lot of these documents, it's all very airy-fairy. There's not really much preciseness in it. Other than they want to increase the tree cover, so I'm just linking it with anywhere where there's any woods or open fields or even farmers' fields. There may not be trees, but we do need to grow food. And I don't know if you all heard the report this morning, there's a new science report saying that there is a fear now that climate change is actually running out of control. And I was even shocked. They said it could be 10 years' time and we could be 1.5 degrees over pre-industrial. Well, if that is the case, that is shocking. So it's actually, the feedback could be happening. I don't know, we don't have evidence. So I'm not sure, looking at the report, where they came from, but it's pretty scary if that's true.
Okay, so a valid point to be made as part of the, as part of the asking them to take that point from the local plan review and highlighting the fact that if the trees are important and at risk
Yeah, and we need to have, and we need to have preservation orders on them, which is what I think Mr Sillifant was saying.
Yeah, I believe that's why they were going to have one of the officers to go and have a look at the woodland there. So it sounds like it's in hand, but you're right, at least that can be part of our statement. Yola, I'm hopeful that you're taking notes of the points that are being made as we go through them. Is that okay? Thank you. And councillor Morehead, you've been very patient and I know you kicked us off and then I made you wait a little bit, so if you'd like to carry on.
First of all, my apologies. My recollection from the meeting didn't include that we were supposed to send in comments in advance. I have drawn up a list of comments. If you, if it's all right with you, I would like to go through them, but not in detail, just what I want to say.
No, that's fine.
I agree with what you said right at the beginning. There needs to be a lot better emphasis on some of these words that are used. And I realise that in some places, Teambridge cannot use words such as require or must because it's not backed by government legislation. But wherever it is, instead of asking a developer to look to require something or to ask them to require, to produce something, where possible, we should use positive words like require, must, not should and maybe, you see what I mean?
I think it's Yeah, clear and concise, yeah.
Wherever legislation allows us. I think, I thought all the climate change stuff was very good, by the way. Environment, E N two refers to undeveloped coast. I did bring this up before, but I wish this now to be recorded, if you all agree. I wish the, there's a slight length now of undeveloped coast left between Dawlish Warren and where the Warren Road joins up with the town. It's, I think it's mainly Mr Weeks's land.
Yeah.
But there is a reference here to undeveloped coast to be protected. This is the only undeveloped bit on that side of the town that I'm aware of, and I would like that to be included. I did bring it up some time ago at a planning workshop and was assured it would be, but it's at the moment. E N 15, 15, refers to trees and hedges and woodlands being protected. I would like to see that within those categories, we include Devon banks and that a developer be required to protect, enhance, and where possible, incorporate such features into future developments, so that we don't lose our heritage entirely. And they're wonderful wildlife corridors as well, of course.
Yeah.
I hope, you can ask everyone afterwards, but anyway, so that's what I would like.
No, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. E C one, which is to do with the economy. I'm sorry, I'm getting these out of order.
No, that's fine.
During the Covid shutdown, lockdown, many, many people had begun to work from home who never did. A lot, or never did before. A lot of them will go back to work, but a lot will also continue to work from home. And I would like the Teambridge to encourage, I don't think they can force them, developers to make sure that their range of housing includes sufficient room for people to have home studies. And where that is not available, on the larger developments, I wouldn't like to specify the number, but it could be 100 plus or whatever, that they urge developers to provide small, and I mean small, office accommodation within a development. I'm not talking about large commercial developments, I'm talking about something like the size of a maisonette. So I would like them to consider including that in their requirements of larger scale developments, so that people don't have to travel to work. If they, but if they haven't got room at home, they've got somewhere close by they can walk to, they can cycle to. So that covers the climate change and pollution generally. So that's just another thought. That's E C one.
Yeah. I mean, from the point of view of, I see that as part of a wishlist, as rather than a, something that could be demanded. I mean, I'm happy to be corrected by other members. But I agree, it might be something to at least put forward as something that does tick the boxes from an ecological point of view. Do you think that's something that we could, I mean, I don't know if you've got an interest in this councillor Taylor, is it something that is your area? Is there something you can is that something that it would be practical to put to issue that? Or councillor Wrigley, I can see a couple of hands going.
One of the things that is, I think, necessary in a new environment is the provision of what I would call co-working spaces. And I think that's what councillor Morehead is talking about.
Not industrial, but
Co-working spaces, shared office space is something that should be considered in developments and as part of community buildings perhaps. So if there is a community centre, then part of it can be given over to to co-working space. That's certainly something that is being considered elsewhere. It's not something that is easy to mandate, but it's something that can be mentioned as a desirable feature of new developments. And if it is mentioned as such, then developers will look at it. It will always be somewhat constrained because they will need to find commercial operators of such space to be able to run them and to manage and maintain them and take them off their hands. Certainly putting them on the agenda means they are considered and not mentioning them at all means they are not necessarily considered. So I would agree with councillor Morehead, it's an excellent thing to add in that co-working spaces will be seen as desirable facilities in such environments.
Or might local district authorities see them as a source of some kind of income if they provided them and rented them?
It's another opportunity. I've got councillor Gary Taylor wanted to come in on this, I think, as well. That's okay, Gary. And I'll come back to you, Val, straight after.
Thank you very much, Chair. My apologies first of all for not being here at the start of the meeting. My computer is not up to doing two Zoom meetings. Overlapping, as it were. So, and would it be proper for me to declare an interest in one of the items on the forthcoming agenda? With regard to the sea, with regard to the sea wall item? I would, I've, having been on the TV saying how much I, well, let me not say anything, but I won't, I'll be leaving the room. And I'll be switching my computer for that item. But in terms of, in terms of the discussion that we're having here, fun enough, that was co-working or hot desking, as was live work units and offices in housing. Is something that I have been discussing with officers this week. So I think if members were mindful to include that on a list of items that they wanted to include in a consultation written response, I think they'd be pushing an open door, but by all means, please do.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wrigley?
Sorry, just while we're there, councillor Morehead just talked about E N 15, trees, hedges and woodlands.
I've got something to add to that one as well, carry on.
And this hits one of my bugbears, having hit this problem locally on one of the new estates in Dawlish. We have the same mistake in here as we had before. We have section five, measures to protect retained trees and traditional Devon hedges must be in place before and remain in place during the development process. What it doesn't say is that the things must be put in place to protect them afterwards.
Yes.
So the traditional problem that we have is that developers have fairly loose rules in terms of their conveyancing. And they tend not to create the hedges as part of an agreed and maintained open space, rather put them into the individual houses' deeds with no indication to the householder that such hedges need to be maintained and looked after. And consequently, they knock down the hedge and put up a fence. And that then defeats the whole purpose, maintaining the hedge during the development process. So I think it's it does say appropriate management will be secured thereafter through agreed landscape management plans. But I don't think that is clear enough to actually say that those should be secured post-development as well.
Yes, okay. That can most certainly be added. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor Wrigley. Can we, can we carry on? I have to say this, councillor Morehead, but as briefly as possible, we've got a lot of things to get through this evening, so I appreciate it.
Where it just says, we refer to the hedges, all I would say is add Devon banks. And when you're talking about management, because they are really important. And where they say about management, it should be long term, maybe even specify how many years that plan should be in place for. 25 years if necessary. They're building houses presumably to last longer than that. Again, I think
You would hope.
Yeah, they don't last very long, these modern ones. E N 15, I think it's the same thing. It refers to sites of local importance and it mentioned green spaces. And I thought we had a list that could also go in there, which covers part of what Mr Sillifant had referred to. If we could list, I believe, but I would rely on you district officers to check this. Oakland's Wood, Warren Cops, Gatehouse Wood, then the lawn, Sandy Lane, the Manor Gardens and the Newey. At the least. I think there is a list that could come under these sites of local importance.
If I may, Chair, I think the list is held separately. So the policy is determined separately to the list. I don't think the list is part of the policy document, but that list should exist and be stipulated.
Okay. I've almost finished, Madam Chair. Sorry to let you back, but I've put a lot of work into this.
No, I appreciate that, councillor Morehead.
The sorry, I've lost scale now, lost where I was. Yes, we've had planning applications quite recently, building outside the settlement boundary. And there's a reference again, this is, I think, in H15 to allowing certain, as they always have done, allowing certain development to house local workers, usually agricultural workers. But there is But there is nothing in there that says that there will then be an agricultural tie attached to that development to the effect that it will not be sold on as market housing at some future date. And I think that needs to be specified. It isn't as far as I can see, but you've read more, you know better than I do.
No, I think you're right.
I'm nearly finished. Let me just look quickly. Sorry.
Can I ask at this stage while councillor Morehood is having a little
I will shut up now. I'll shut up.
I was just going to say, are there any other members who've brought anything to this evening's meeting that they want to raise, please? Otherwise, I'll go back to councillor Morehood if she's found some other points to make. Any other members with any other points to make? No? Okay. Councillor Morehood, floor is yours.
I don't want to bore you with a load more. I shall, I'll be putting my own in over the weekend anyway, but
Okay.
It's just generally, I think it's very good. I think the climate change, all those kinds of things are good. I like the fact that they're not, they're going to make sure that all public seats like benches and bus shelters are suitable for the less mobile and the elderly. Those tip up things. And I like the reference to having electric charging points in all the car parks. I would like to know that that would be retrospective and they would put them in places like the Barton Car Park and the one by the taxi rank. But these are just, you know, well, wouldn't it be nice? Otherwise, I think I've come up with the important things that I picked out myself. Thank you.
No, I think that's a very, I think it's some really good points there councillor Morehood. Thank you for what would have been quite a lot of work. So I really appreciate you taking that time. Members, I'll give you the last chance if there's anything you would like to comment on that has been raised so far. Or we're going to kind of close this item and move on to other items on the agenda. So one last chance for anyone else who wants to add anything on this point, please. Councillor Wrigley?
If I may, councillor Mary Lather, I think was trying to speak as well.
I was just going to say, were you putting your pen up?
Just that it's well worthwhile people writing in with their individual comments on this as well, because all those comments are taken on board. And whilst the town council should certainly put a comment back in, it doesn't negate individual councillors, let alone individual residents, sending in their thoughts and feelings on these different policies and how they feel they can be improved. And any specific wordings that need to be added can always be helpful because whilst I agree many of these need tightening up in their language, it can be a bit difficult to interpret tightening up of language. When you're looking at it and you think you've already got it pretty tight, so it's specific examples will be extremely useful to those people who are reviewing this and actually taking this forward.
Okay. Thank you very much councillor Morehood. You have your blue hand up, please.
Sorry, just one last one. And it joins, it follows on from what Martin was saying and what you've been saying before. It's a slackness in the wording. For example, allotments are referred to in various places. They appear on a plan, but there is nothing that says a developer should be required, and I use the word deliberately, to provide a certain percentage of allotment land per so many tens, twenties, fifties, hundreds of houses. And I think really that should be in there. That comes into your wildlife, your health and wellbeing, the climate change, it comes into everything. But it just says, oh, they're there in the picture. There is nothing that actually makes any kind of requirement. I don't know whether central government legislation allows you to do that, but please, would you try to find out if it does? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Point made. Thank you very much councillor Morehood. Councillor Mary Lather, were you trying to raise your hand? Because you've put it, you've raised your hand and then put it down again. So if you want the opportunity to speak, please do. You'll have to unmute yourself. Can you unmute yourself or?
Am I unmuted now?
You are now. We can hear you. Thank you, Mary.
It's just a small niddle that I have. And that this plan was only given an extra month through the Covid nineteen thing. And there must be hundreds of people who have been isolating since March and won't be getting out until the end of July and have not had the opportunity to go in to Timbridge. If they wanted, they couldn't go to a library until recently and they still can't go because they're still locked down. So I think that Timbridge should have extended this further than just one month.
Okay.
And I think it's quite serious because, you know, companies' house straight away gave three months to businesses to make sure that they got their annual accounting. And I think just doing one month is not sufficient time.
It's a valid point councillor Lather. It's a valid point.
That was it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Taylor?
It was originally given eight weeks back in March when I think, I think we launched Timbridge, Teambridge, launched it back in, back in March. Originally eight weeks, they extended it to twelve weeks. They extended it further to sixteen weeks. So it's been the longest piece of consultation that I think Teambridge have ever done. But all the same, we do appreciate that during lockdown, it has been difficult for people to access some of the documentation. I just hope that, you know, we've done, we've done right. I think we've done as best as we possibly could under the circumstances and we thank everybody for their responses.
Okay, okay. Okay, everybody, let's move on to the new applications for consideration. The first item is going to be the Dawlish Railway Station, which we've decided to take as the two actual numbers, the twenty double O nine two two and twenty double O nine two three as one item. Councillor Taylor, I understand you're going to leave the meeting now, if that's okay. Can I also tell members that after taking advice, I'm not going to take part in this item either. So it will be in, the first thing you will need to do, members, I'm afraid, and Yola already knows about this, is to elect a chair for just this one item. I will put myself in the waiting room or however Yola wants to do this and won't take any further part in this item.
Chair, before you disappear, would that advice also apply to myself as also a member of the Teambridge?
It is your choice councillor Wrigley. As both of us are on the the planning committee for district council, it would be advisable, but it is absolutely each councillor's choice.
Okay, thank you. And so just, so I will choose to actually stay and take part in the debate and actually
Okay.
do this. But I will also state that, you know, I go into this with an open mind. And when the same decision comes forward at Teambridge, where there may or may not be more information upon which to make a choice, I will also go into that meeting with an open mind and make a decision relevant to the information put in front of us for that meeting in the same way as I do for this meeting.
Absolutely fine. Councillor Heath, you've got your hand up. Is that something you want to share with me or?
No, it's fine. It's all of us. I think actually it's probably councillor Martin Wrigley's answered the question, but I was just thinking and I was panicking a bit. I don't want everybody with extra knowledge on these things suddenly disappear. And that we haven't got the expertise, because obviously the benefit of council means lots of heads are better than one. So I'm pleased that you're staying with us.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yola, if you want to put me in the waiting room, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll see you soon.
Oh, I'm not sure I can put you in the waiting room if you're a co-host.
That's fine. I will, I will just stop video and mute.
Okay, so you need to vote a chair for this next two items before I launch into the PowerPoint presentation?
I propose councillor Wrigley.
I was going to recuse myself from being chair because that does give me but I, can I ask the clerk, would that make any difference in my position if I were chairing it?
I think the concern with councillor Goodman Bradbury is obviously when, even if she was not going to be taking part in the vote discussion, it would be that if there was a tie or a split decision that she would have to give a casting vote. So it was very much that she didn't want to be predetermined at a district council. So it's entirely up to you, but.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We could have a tie again.
Can I make a suggestion?
Alison.
Well, what I was going to say, rather than us all popping questions, how about raising your hand if you'd be acceptable for a proposal? So at least we can see who would like to do it. Can we do that?
Well, I was just going to second Martin being it. Because the proposal had already come through.
He doesn't want to do it.
Okay, well, I will, I will, I will, I will take that because I can probably sit more neutrally as chair in the debate and offer, offer knowledge. So, okay. I will accept that nomination. Thank you.
Can I just suggest that the answer to that is that you don't use a casting vote?
Agreed.
Well, I would suggest you didn't use a vote.
Well, it's the same thing.
No, casting vote is different.
Well, yeah, true, but I guess he wouldn't be voting if he doesn't do casting, but you're correct.
Okay. Can we, can we, Yola, do we need to see a show of hands? Because we've only had a nomination before you.
Okay, yes. Oh, hang on, stop.
Switch to. So, hang on, let me pull the video out and get everybody on it.
Yeah, we've lost everybody.
Okay, I've got everybody back. So can I see a show of hands for a nomination for myself as chair, please? Okay, thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Councillor Tamlin, I'm not sure I saw you vote. You're not? You're still on mute, I'm sorry. Okay, well, I think that was carried. Clark, would you agree? Okay, thank you. Can we move on into the screenshot, please?
Just a reminder that the first screen just shows the three three images on the other one, but the other one wouldn't include both of them. So these are the L B C specific screens and then the other presentation has everything for both. If you let me know when you're happy that you've seen.
G I S there shows the area we're talking about. And just back to the first screen again of the next, so that shows the area that is listed, which is principally the station. But not the boathouse, as far as I can see on this picture. I thought the boathouse was listed.
As previously mentioned, it's only the plans that are on both of these presentations, so all reports and anything additional obviously needs to be looked at in advance.
So have we seen sufficient in terms of these, these pictures and move on to the second presentation? Anyway, have you got any questions on those first three slides? No? Okay, councillor Morehood?
I'm just assuming that we've all done our homework and we've looked through all of these and we already know the kind of things that we would like to ask or.
I hope we have. We've also had various sort of briefings and things on this before. So so Yola, could we just briefly go through these? So we've got.
Yeah, there's quite a number, so I will just be clicking in sequence. Like, this is a presentation that all of you would have had beforehand, so it's just reminding you, it's just a prompt.
Okay. So again, showing the area concerned.
That's a conservation area.
Breaking it down into the different sheets.
High end water springs. So it's again. Elevations. That's drainage.
Thank you councillor Morehood.
Oh, sorry, my arm. I'm sorry, I'm muttering to myself.
Okay, I'm not sure. We're learning much new from these. They're, whilst it's useful to have them on the thing, now we see some of the more relevant ones.
If you want me to stop at any time, do you just say?
No, it's good. We're going through them relatively quickly, just reminding ourselves what we're looking at. It's good to have them on record since we're recording. So we can see the different existing elevations. And the proposed plan with the bridges, the bridge. And the Stillage area, Stillage Bay, Stilling Bay, Stilling Basin. Okay. I think we've all seen the various different bits and pieces on this. If we just leave the slideshow going through in the background, if that's all right, people would like that. I think that's helpful. Would anybody like to start off the debate on this? I can't see blue hands. Let me bring blue hands. I see a blue hand. Councillor Morehood?
Councillor Morehood, you need to unmute.
Generally speaking, I think it's what we expected anyway. The aim is to protect the railway line. I have one or two concerns. One is that for past several years, there's been a wish to have a ramp exiting from the down platform down to beach level. That, as far as I can see, and I've spent ages looking at this, doesn't appear to be the case now. In fact, if anyone comes along from Dawlish Warren on the promenade, they have to get down to beach level by a series of steps. And the only way off, sorry, the only other way they can get down to the beach if they have poor mobility or a pushchair or whatever, is to continue past the viaduct towards Marine Parade and then backtrack down the ramp there to get down to the Stilling Basin and thence down the next ramp onto the beach below the station. So I'm very disappointed to see that. And it seems obvious that you cannot get off the down platform without going in the direction of the lifts and up and over. And of course, there's a ramp the other side to get down. Then you'd have to go around the back of the station or the front, whichever way you look at it, to come underneath the colonnade, to come back down the ramp to get on the beach. But that seems to be the way they've designed it and I don't see that they will change that. I am very disappointed to see that. There's no way out of that down platform. And I can see there are all kinds of physical reasons why that is not the case. And the only other thing I would say is I don't like the design of the actual lift towers. I think, to use an architectural term, they're rather brutalist, bare concrete and squared. And I would like to have seen some kind of nod towards the the listed building of the station, i.e. in cladding, in a stone type cladding and or with a low apex roof, which you can see on the other side of the station, on the various bits. I would just like to see it looking a bit more in keeping, a bit more sympathetic towards the original station. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I think Thank you, councillor. I, I, I think it, it's probably worthwhile sort of making a few sort of opening suggestions on this, which is that you certainly welcome Network Rail. Sorry, perhaps in, in retrospect, the, it, it's a bit distracting having the pictures flicking through. Perhaps we can switch those off and go back to, uh.
Are you happy you've seen everything? I know it was just a prompt.
Anybody want the pictures to remain?
I can stop sharing for the moment.
Councillor Lowther, do you want to?
I was just going to, oh, sorry, suggest that we went to sixty-one and sixty-two, which are the pictures showing the artist impression. And the next one. There, you see, you can see the, what we're talking about, all the steps coming down. And then there's a ramp going there. Well, this is what we thought was all going to be a ramp down, down this way. I think that would be an idea to, to keep that on the screen as well as to see.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's fine. Let's stick, I'll just move you over there so I can see. Okay. Um, I think, I think we can probably come with some initial comments, which is that we very much welcome Network Rail looking at protecting the railway and we acknowledge that the railway needs protection and it is a critical element of Dawlish. And, uh, there is no way we want to do anything that endangers the, uh, the railway line and we want to make sure that the railway line is here in perpetuity and is protected. So I think we can all agree with that.
Yep, yep.
I think there are some, still some questions to be asked about the specific design and whether the design is correct. Out of interest, it became clear from one of the presentations that there are two separate sets of funding involved here. One is funding the bridge, which is absolutely needed and has been needed in Dawlish for many, many, many years to enable people to safely come off the, um, is it the downside?
Yes.
Um, of the track. It's always down from London, isn't it? And it's up to London. The downside of the track, uh, uh, to cross and to enable people to safely get across that line. So the, the inclusion of a lift and a bridge is most definitely welcomed and is to be, uh, uh, to be encouraged. I hear concerns about some specifics in the design. Uh, councillor Morehood saying there are concerns about the ramp down to the beach. I think councillor Lowther, you were echoing that, or lack of ramp down to the beach. Um, I heard, uh, um, our, our member of the public offering concerns about the, uh, some of the way that the, the heritage was being covered up as well. I note with interest the, uh, statement from the Historic England, uh, which I think actually is as critical of a government proposed scheme as I've ever seen, which is kind of interesting. I think they are being very guarded in their words, but they are being quite critical of it. I am disappointed that this is the design that has come forward. I very much appreciated the chance that Network Rail gave us to work with them in looking at the designs and am still struggling to understand why any form of wave breaking reef or barrier at the sea has not been included. I understand why we discounted, why they discounted the, uh, a, a lower walkway along the, uh, along the seafront. That was clearly modeled and clearly shown that it would have caused worse problems. I think that is evidently true because it was where there was a lower walkway that the seawall previously broke in twenty fourteen. And let us not forget that the twenty fourteen break was not on the seawall that we have today. It was on a seawall that was not protected in front of sea lawn terrace because it had a lower walkway along there. My understanding was the original Brunel's time, the people who had the houses didn't want people to be able to see into their front windows. So the seawall that we have today is very different to the seawall that was in twenty fourteen and is not there. My feeling is that there is a strong emphasis on reducing maintenance costs and less of an emphasis on how this reacts and interacts with the Dawlish situation. I think from when we looked at Marine Parade, the engineering is very clear that the best sort of sea defences have three components. A wave breaking, uh, reef or, um, breakwater, a well-stocked beach and the seawall. And I think it's disappointing that we have gone for what is the cheapest and the most ineffective form of sea defences, which is simply a very high seawall. We were promised when the then Prime Minister came down in twenty fourteen that money was no object. And I think we are seeing here that money is an object and I don't think this is the best design that we can have, not only in terms of protecting Dawlish, but also in terms of protecting the railway line. Because it's not got those three components. Just to be clear also, there was one question which was asked of Network Rail by one of our councillors in a previous presentation. The question was, will this seawall prevent Dawlish from flooding? The answer is very clearly, no, it will not. This is not a seawall to protect Dawlish. This is a seawall that is designed purely and simply to protect the railway at the cheapest possible way of doing it. Network Rail's own engineers recommended a seawood structure. And that is in some of the reports, but they were discounted. So I have yet to have a reasonable, um, argument as to why a seawall would not, a, a, um, a seawood structure would not be suitable in this construction. We actually know the costs of a construction for a breakwater. And it's fifteen, according to Network Rail, they gave us the costs, um, which works out to be about half the costs of the entire project would be a breakwater for the entire length of the seawall. The statement was then made that was completely unjustified, which was that two structures meant double the cost. Well, it doesn't at all. That's not true. It's more difficult and undoubtedly it may be more expensive. I think it does mean higher maintenance costs in the future. But it doesn't mean that it's not the best solution. So I'm not convinced yet that we have the best design here. And I am convinced that this is not the only design. Anybody else want to talk? Who? Councillor Heath. You're still on mute, councillor.
I did tap it, but it doesn't like my finger. Right.
There we go.
Okay, yeah, I'm just reading, scrolling through the, um, Historic England report, which I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at that one. Eighth of July, it's dated, so it's pretty up to date. Um, I don't quite, actually quite understand a certain part, but it's sub-frontage. That is the part of the platform that overhangs the walkway underneath, you know, the original bit done in nineteen thirty, which was extended. Now, they're saying that's going to be done away with, which will affect the station. But I think it must just be badly written where it's, it comes under sub-frontage, A, the impact of the proposed work of Dawlish Water Basin. And then underneath that, you've got sub-frontage B, which is the bit we're looking at, I believe. But I don't quite get the, the, the gist of the, of the note here saying that it will take away the, the historic effects. Well, I can imagine it would do, but obviously a wooden platform overhanging the sea this day and age with the sea that's getting high is not, not very safe. But they're almost writing this as if the platform's not going to exist anymore. So I don't know whether it's just, I'm not understanding it or whether they haven't written it very well, which is not very good because they're making a case that it shouldn't be removed. But it's not very clear. It needs, uh, it needs looking at again. I don't know if anyone else has found that particular one. See, this on the links we've got.
I, 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 I agree with you, councillor. It's not hugely clear. Um, they are saying all of that section of the platform will no longer exist in the way it currently does. It will be replaced by concrete and there will be a concrete platform, uh, uh, above that. So I think it, it's, it, I, I'm not entirely sure, again, having seen this only fairly recently myself. It's interesting that they say opportunities should be explored to accommodate and they're asking for changes.
Yeah, they are. The fact that the whole effort is asking for quite, quite a few, backing up one of the members of the public that stuff will be lost, of which probably could be preserved and not just end up in a skip. And I think they should play, uh, pay more attention to the historic link with Dawlish rather than just protecting the track, as you actually pointed out yourself. But I'm not sure if they've gone far enough in, uh, saving some of the history here.
Councillor Tamlin. I'm sorry, councillor, I'll come to councillor Morehood next, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is it a listed building? Does anyone know? It is.
Yes, we have a listed building consent.
I'm surprised they're allowed to do it. If you look at the old vicarage we're trying to get, you know, building for, um, because it's listed, there's all these problems. I'm surprised they're allowed to do it. And I think, yes, any, anything historical should be kept, as, as the, uh, gentleman who came this evening has said, yeah, it is listed building. I'm surprised they're allowed to do it.
Councillor Tamlin, they haven't yet been allowed to do it. This is what they're asking to do.
Okay.
And it, it is, you know, we are part of that decision-making process to determine whether they should be allowed to do it or not.
Right.
Um, what I'm not sure on, and I will need to check, I haven't looked up, is whether the, the boathouse is part of the listed area. I don't know if anybody knows whether that is, uh, that is one of the listed buildings. If it is, then it's, um, it's a bit difficult because they have taken the roof off and they're allowing it to degrade. And that, that's exactly what you cannot do, a listed building, as we have discovered with the, uh, the old vicarage.
Right, that's right. Um, councillor Ridley, um, I was, I would actually, um, I've forgotten that what I was going to say actually, but I, I agreed with a lot of the points that you made. And in the very beginning, I was looking at a breakwater as well as being the answer. I think possibly a breakwater may come, you know, when they realise that the wall doesn't do the job they expect it to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Morehood, you were next.
Um, well, following on a lot of what you said, and a lot of these things are brought up when we had a pre-consultation presentation about, um, a, a breakwater further out to sea, um, which would need a, a lower wall and less, if you like, damage to the whole historic construction. I don't think the boathouse is listed, but it's all within a conservation area. But I'm afraid utilities don't seem to, they pay scant regard to these kind of.
That's right.
Not obliged to do anything else. But, um, I would have thought that it was possible to bring the promenade from Dawlish Warren round the back of the station where they were retaining the actual, uh, seawood side of the station. And then go around the corner and continue to the Marine Parade without actually having to fill in, which is what they're going to do, solidly fill in all the, um, colonnades with the Victorian, I believe they are, iron supports and so forth. I think really feeding into what you and Martin Heath and, and Carol are saying, I don't think this, this is a final design. I don't think it's something we should just lie down and accept. There are good points to it, like having some lifts at last. But you don't just stick a lift there and say, well, then we've done that. So, you know, you have to accept the rest. I think there's room or should be room for manoeuvre. And there certainly is scant regard paid to the fact that it's a listed building with a particular character. And there is no reflection of that in the lifts or anything else.
No.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? Can I just read you the last, last paragraph of the Historic England document? It says, "Your authority should take these representations into account and seek amendments, safeguards or future information as set out in our advice." So they are, are suggesting that there are changes that should be made to these designs. Councillor Lowther.
Yeah, um, I, I've been listening to this, um, Historic England notice. And I haven't seen that. Where, where was it? When we sent it or is it?
It's in the documents on the website, as, um, I think somebody referred to earlier. It was only, uh, it's dated eighth of July.
Okay.
So it only came in yesterday. So if you looked at the, looked at the, uh, documentation earlier, it may not have been on there. So I'm not sure when it was filed here.
Okay.
It was, it was filed today, actually, the ninth of July. It's been put up on the list. It's the top one on there on the Tinbridge site.
Okay, missed it. But I'm, 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 as you know, I'm a part of Dawlish Conservation Trust. And I'm just appalled at looking at what kind of building they were doing. When we had the consultation before, I brought up, um, when they showed the picture of the lifts looking like, you know, I think I refer to it as a concrete carbon block. Because it just looks to me absolutely awful. Um, the design of it does not fit in with the town. I mean, the whole town is supposed to, the centre of the town, that's all a conservation area as well. And how on earth are we going to ask people about keeping the houses and the gradings and everything? Those are listed buildings when we're allowing this to happen to one of the important listed buildings in the town. So I've come off my hobby horse, but I feel very strongly.
Thank you. Councillor Foden.
Thank you. Um, so looking at these plans, I'm very pleased to see that Network Rail are considering and planning to improve the accessibility to our station for both platforms and that they're, um, planning to install a lift and the ramp. However, I'm anxious at the height of the wall and the, the new seawall, the height is going to be huge when you're looking at the beach. And I'm concerned that there's no, as far as I can see from the plans, there's no escape, escape steps from the beach up to the seawall. So if in the event of a tsunami or a huge wave coming out of nowhere with no warning, there's nowhere apart from running the length of the beach to, um, exit via the, um, the new stilling basin steps. There's no, as there is currently, there's no steps up to the seawall. That really concerns me. Um, I am concerned at what they're proposing around the stilling basin. I'm concerned that it's rather a concrete monstrosity and I think it will terribly affect the view looking out underneath the colonnade, um, bridge from, say, from tax plots. It will greatly affect that view. Um, so I, I'm happy that they're proposing the, the accessibility improvements, but I'm, I don't like the design.
It's interesting. On one of their pictures, they show someone walking along the beach and they actually show the tide coming in behind them as they're walking into a basic entrapment. I think it's, it's difficult to predict where the tide comes in on that beach, certainly as the levels of the beach change on a regular basis. Councillor Morehood, you still have your hand up. You wish to speak again?
I put it up again just to worry you. I agree with a lot of things that have been said by councillor Foden. The stilling area, as they refer to it. Timbridge officers have made representations about that. It's a totally inorganic design. It's not at all conducive to the sea life or anything else. It's brutal again. And I think we've got a case, or a case, we've got a reason to now refer them to this English Heritage last-minute submission and to refer to this Timbridge submission about the stilling basin on top of everything else. And the point is, no matter how high that wall is, they can't be sure they're going to stop the water. We have witnessed water coming straight over the new extremely high wall along Marine Parade. Whereas what we had thought might be possible would be an offshore, some kind of breakwater, solid or permeable, semi-permeable. That would reduce the wave force before it got to the wall. And therefore, as I understand it, reduce the necessity for such a high and over-imposing structure. I think we need to ask them to go back and look at all of this again.
Is that a proposal, councillor Morehood?
Do I dare, councillor Ridley? I would propose that in that case that we ask Network Rail to, before finalising their plans, to visit the English Heritage recommendations regarding the overall design, to take into account the Timbridge recommendations about the stilling basin and to take into account local feeling that we are losing our heritage. There is scant reference given to the heritage of our building, which is so important to our town. This is what visitors come for, it's the Brunel Railway. Whilst I understand their need to protect the railway line, but there must be more than one way of doing it.
There is. We had a series of options at the beginning of the process. There are other options, this is not the only option.
May I?
Councillor Lather, sorry.
Yeah. Well, one thing I was second, thinking what councillor Morehood has said, but I wanted to make it clear that I am not against having the lift. The lift to me is, you know, a marvellous thing because I have struggled on that downside. But I really think the design is completely out of keeping with Dawlish as a town. And I think that they can do something about making it in line with the building that we have. And they can do anything these days. They can make it look as if it's just been, you know, it was built in the 1800s. So I really think that we should be very strong. But if I remember rightly, when we mentioned having a breakwater and about something for the design of the lift, they actually used it against us, saying that, well, you know, you either have something or lose the ground. Does anybody else remember them saying that kind of thing to us?
Councillor Lather, that is a... If that came from any other developer, that might be considered
Yes.
inappropriate language.
But it wasn't.
In these terms, that's not a planning issue. I think we can reiterate that Dawlish, you know, we really do want the sea wall, a sea wall, a sea protection. We want the railway line protected and we absolutely want lifts. What I'm hearing is that we want a better design of those things rather than what has been presented today. Councillor Heath.
I'm just thinking about a lot of the stone that's been dumped, as it were. In fact, it's been dumped on the main road not far from us and being broken up with a giant breaker, day and night almost. Well, not night time, but it's a lot of work. Perhaps one of our suggestions should be, can't they save more of this historic stone and clad it? Because at least cladding would look a lot better rather than just a concrete block. I can't understand why they would just have a concrete block, like some new museum coming out of the ground. It's just very odd.
I think we have to remember that Network Rail have one purpose and one purpose only, which is to protect the railway.
True. But as we've all pointed out, it is listed. Historic England have pointed out a number of things that we're saying. If we're going to make a representation, we should add that in that case to the proposal that the lift shaft, if not redesigned, should at least be clad in the local stone or lookalike local stone, which is at least a positive suggestion rather than just criticising them all the time.
Thank you, councillor. So councillor Morehood, councillor Lather, you happy to add that to your proposal?
Yeah.
Councillor Morehood, yes? You're on mute, sorry.
I would like to add, if everyone's in agreement, that in general, we accept that there needs to be protection to the line and we are very pleased to see the inclusion of lifts. However, we would like to see them clad in a way which makes them more sympathetic to the building. And then the rest, as we said before. Can you go make some sense of that and read it back through to us, please?
Yes, so your original proposal was asking Network Rail to look at the plans, report from English Heritage recommendation, take into account the Timbridge recommendations and the local feeling. You've gone on to say about that you're not against the lift, you're very pro the lift. You're also pro the protection of the line and you would want to see a sea wall and the railway be generally protected. But I think also following from the member of public suggestion earlier, you've talked about the reusing of stone, sympathetic cladding. So the design is more in keeping with the local area and where things can identify with the heritage that was to continue to do that, even if it's in a modern way.
They do talk, by the way, we've all have seen it, I'm sure, that they're going to try to reuse as much, if not all, of the stone from the coastguard's building and to use for benches and so forth. But it could just as well be used for cladding on the walls and so forth. So they are already thinking of retaining it.
Yeah. Can I just sort of...
Roof on the top of the lift shaft.
Councillor Heath.
Yeah, just making it clear because when it was read back, we didn't actually specify there, cladding the lift shaft. Perhaps we should just tweak that a bit so they know what we're talking about.
Yes.
Unless I misunderstood you. I didn't think you said that bit, or did I miss it?
I think I was skating over the summary because my notes don't actually make grammatical sense. I will make sense of them afterwards. But yes, those are the key points. So yes, I have, I've made sure there's a specific mention of cladding the lift shaft.
The other points that were raised, if we are minded to add these in, were those that you raised early on at the beginning, councillor Morehood, about the ramp down to the beach. And that was then expanded by councillor Foden about lack of access and concerns about safety on the beach.
Yep.
We've got a lack of egress as well, isn't it?
Escape route, is there?
There's no escape route.
We really need to make it point by point, I suppose.
Taking away a number of stairs and access points. Just for information, the wall here that we're talking about isn't the same as the Marine Parade wall. It differs in two ways. Firstly, it is not sloped like the Marine Parade wall is. It is absolutely vertical. Secondly, it is higher. It is at least one metre higher than the Marine Parade wall.
So no wave return, so the waves are going to go slap into it.
The wave return is on the top, like it is at the Marine Parade wall. There is a kickback at the top to do that sort of wave return function. There isn't any lower down curvature to return the wave.
Could I make a suggestion? Could I suggest that I retract the proposal as it is and that we compile a list of items which we would like to propose go back to Network Rail? I think it would be clearer.
If councillor Mary Lather agrees with you as your seconder, then yes, we can do that. Yep, I think she does. Okay. So I think your opening statements probably stay the same and then you go into a list of things. We have part of that list already, I guess, from what Yola has already noted. Is there anything else we want to add into that list? Do you need more direction in terms of making that list, Yola?
Yes, because obviously originally that was the proposal. We got as far as the cladding and then I think we jumped to various things regarding the wall, but it wasn't actually summarised points. I am conscious of time because you do have a number of other items that need to be obviously done this evening. So if you want to summarise the points, add it on to what's already there and then obviously make your proposal and take a secondary and then take a vote. That would be good.
Lack of a ramp down to the beach from the promenade from Dawlish Warren. Poor design of the stilling basin and refer them to the Timbridge recommendations regarding that. Lack of respect for the heritage of the station, which is a listed building in a conservation area and we'd refer them to the English Heritage statement of today's date or yesterday's date. Very pleased to see the lifts, however, the design of them is very harsh. And we would wish to see that improved by stone cladding to reflect the listed station and/or a low-pitched roof on the top, which again reflects the building. And I don't know, other people might want to add something in here. Overall, we don't think it's a generally good design and we would still like them to to look again at the idea of an offshore barrier in order to reduce the force of the waves. Is that what you were thinking, councillor Ridley? Do you like to refine the list? Anyway, I'll shut up now.
That sounds like a list to me. Councillor Heath.
Yeah, just qualifying something. Now, does anybody fully understand the drawing? From where we go under the viaduct now and we go where that pond's going to, supposed to be, to the right, as you're looking out to sea, that's into the cliffs at the end of the beach, are we saying now there is no emergency escape steps whatsoever? Just want to clarify that first of all, because as you know, there's at least one lot of sort of emergency steps along there. So are we, at least I think there are, but are we saying there's like nothing there now at all?
Just from memory, the design they showed us, which is going from colonnades to the coastguards, you can get up to the wall at either end, but not in the middle.
Anywhere along.
So the first steps are at the, right by the station as you come under the colonnade. And then the next set of steps would be at the coastguards beyond the boathouse.
Beyond the boathouse.
Beyond the boathouse.
Is that, that's one less then, isn't it? Because I think there's one in the middle at the moment, isn't there?
There's at least one in the middle and at the moment, it's less important at the moment because the level of the walkway is very low.
Yeah.
So you can almost climb that. It's less than six foot from the beach.
So perhaps we should say, at least hopefully then somebody will look at it, even if they don't agree with us, that they should add another emergency staircase up onto the colonnade or the walkway up the top for safety reasons, for escape, should there be, as was pointed out, a sudden freak wave, which, you know, will probably happen at some point. Could we add that to the list? Do you think that's a good idea?
Sorry, just to clarify, don't forget you are commenting or recommendation on what has been submitted to Timbridge. So it's not, obviously, as much as you might want to change things from Network Rail. This has obviously been submitted to them. So it's what you feel about the designs as they are, with the applications as they are. So if there's things that you're unhappy about and obviously you agree with other reports etcetera and you want to point Timbridge in that direction to obviously go back and that's fine. But obviously, just obviously trying to keep it to the applications as well.
So is it purely at the level of a concern for safety because there are only two ways up onto the wall?
Yeah, perhaps that's the answer.
Yeah, I think you need to be sort of sticking to obviously what's been there rather than going down a list of what would be ideal because obviously that's not on the table at the moment.
Okay. Do we have a... Time is pressing. Do we have anything else to add to this list?
I'm looking at the picture here of on the beach, trying to get up. And there is a slope going down to the beach, but then it looks as if you're coming to steps again.
Yes.
Now, we're talking about, you know, disabled people being able to go on the beach. And people with pushchairs and you're trying to get off. So it just doesn't... And then you kind of come up and round the corner and then you can go onto the viaduct. But there is egress off it, but it doesn't look... You know, they keep putting all these, you know, dozens of steps and then a ramp. Just doesn't make sense to me. So I just thought I...
Okay, thank you.
Because I was looking at...
Yeah. Do we have anything else to add to our proposal before we vote on it? Councillor Heath, you've just gone on mute.
I won't actually add any other disclarifiables that's been stated. The problem being is they do do a ramp instead of steps. You will lose a lot more beach because steps can go up at quite a quick rate. Whereas a ramp for a pushchair, it's got to be pretty gentle and you'll be using up metres upon metres of beach that will all be concrete. So there is a bit of play there with, you know, how much beach do you want to lose? And do we have steps? And I'm not qualified to answer that because it's a, yeah, you know what I mean anyway.
Thank you, councillor Heath. That's exactly what I was going to say because they did play with a number of different options there and ended up with saying, well, there is a long, shallow ramp up on the Marine Parade side and that is connected at the top. So you have to go across and up the ramp that side and then back across to avoid the steps. But it does avoid taking away quite a few metres of beach in the main sort of beach area there. So that's, okay. Anything else to add to this before we go to a vote? No, can we move to a vote then? So the proposal is that we object. We appreciate the fact that the railway needs protection. We're very much in favour of the lift. We have a list of issues with the design and it's this specific design as opposed to the idea of protecting the wall, the railway. Okay. Can I see a show of hands for, please? Okay. That's everybody bar me. I will stand back from voting on this one. I think we're done. Thank you very much. Yola, could you bring our colleagues back in? And that's for both of those applications.
I think, oh, I have to stop the video, okay. Hopefully Lyn hasn't wandered off.
No, no, I'm here.
Mr Gibson may or may not wish to stay. He's very welcome to stay, but he can also leave if he wants to now the item is done. And the assumption is that that vote was for both items, taking them together.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Which is what we said at the beginning and reiterated at the end.
Okay.
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 Chair, I will hand back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's have a look at some more slightly mundane items. I'm sure they're not to the people who've put planning application in. The first item is 200836 Horden's Lane, Holcombe. And it's a single-storey front extension. Yola, if you can just take us through these. We have quite an extended house. I think you all know where this is. It's a sloping ground not far from the Timoth Road. And it's not so much a... It's a reconfigure, I think, and a reconfiguring and an open planning of the actual building as I see it. reconfiguring and an open planning of the actual building as I see it. Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on the, on the item at the moment?
Chair, I think we've seen this house a number of times before, haven't we?
We have. It is a revisit councillor Wiggly, so I'm, I'm not clear. There are some changes. It's about, it's about the configuration of it, isn't it? On the ground floor there. On the actual roadside to the, councillor Morehead, you have your hands raised. What did you want to, to talk about please?
Into a mute valve.
Have we got any last minute representations or objections from neighbours, please?
I checked this afternoon. There wasn't any, no objections or additional input unless, Yola, you have anything for us?
Not that I'm aware of, but I haven't checked it today because obviously this was done quite well in advance.
Yeah, I, I checked it this, I checked it today, I must admit.
Chair, there's nothing there now.
No. Okay. So everyone clear on the, on the, the changes that they want, they want to make there? And does anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to go back. Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to go back. I'd like to go back to the slide for where the, it might be this one, where the additional bits added on. They're all quite clear. Just how much they were adding on to the front there. If we can find that one or not. For example, this one here, is the new bit showing here? Is that to the, to the right?
I think it's, I think it is, yeah. Councillor Taylor, can you clarify this for us? Is this one you've, you've looked at?
Yes, I, I have. In fact, we, we, we've, we've have seen the next door neighbour's house as well come under.
Yes, we have. It's been a familiar sight, hasn't it?
And I think the next door neighbour's house now, if my memory serves me well, also came before us for approval for a similar facade in terms of the gable, a double, a double height, two storey gable at the front. Now, this has also got, this has also got an outbuilding which is being converted into here we are, there's the plans right in front of me here, look, with a bedroom and a bathroom coming off the foyer. I think they're making the best of a, the best of what is a bit of an architectural mixture of, of a house. But certainly it'll be, it'll be a very well appointed house. I, I have, I have no objections. And certainly if there are, if there are no neighbours who, who have had anything untoward to say about it, I'd be happy to propose it.
Propose as set out councillor Taylor?
As set out.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lauthar, you have your hand up. See if we can hear you. There you go.
I'm just, I'm losing the will here.
Stay with us.
Second.
Yeah.
It was proposed, so I will second it.
Thank you.
Shall we accept it?
Is there any, are there any other points that people would like to make on this? It is a, it's, I hasten to say it's a relatively straightforward thing. We have seen this before, but any other points or are we able to move to the vote on this one? Last call? Okay, well, we have a proposal to accept as set out. We have a seconder from councillor Lauthar, so let's have a vote please. Those in favour of the proposal? Thank you. Okay, let's go on to 200966. This is a small extension, bifold doors, kitchen and lounge for one of the new houses on the Finisterre Avenue in Dawlish. So this is the curving close that kind of climbs up above the woods with the back, the woods kind of backing on to it.
Which woods are we talking about?
Elm Grove Woods, so the ones that go on eventually to get to the, what I know is the old golf course, the, the, the big park by the leisure centre.
Right. Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
James Plantation.
Thank you. Thank you. I know it well. The, the fence is still there, but the, the trees the other side of it have gone.
Shame.
Absolutely. So what we have is a small ground floor extension with, from what I could see, they're extending an open planning there, kitchen and lounge with some bifold doors. So it's just joining the two together, as you can see in that proposed plan there.
I, I, I would propose no objection, Chair.
Accept as set out.
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other items that you would like to, to mention at this stage on this one? No? Okay, we'll go to the vote then please, ladies and gentlemen. Propose as, as set out, so acceptance of that please. Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you, Yola. Okay, we're going to go now have a look at 200975. That's 14 Oak Park Villas. She's quick off the mark, Yola is. Thank you. So this is an extension and cladding to match. It's adding a bedroom. And again, there's no additional objections or comments by neighbours that I've found as of today.
Sorry, just to interrupt, somebody needs to mute. They've got quite a lot of background noise going on. Still occurring.
Is that it? That noise?
Chair, I, I think again, I would, I would propose no objection.
Okay. Thank you very much. Carol, sorry, I'll see if I can unmute you. No. Go on Carol, show us what you've got. Show us, show us, there you go. Hello. Well done, Carol.
I'm getting better.
Brilliant.
Not that big, Gary.
What did you want to say, Carol?
I second what Martin said.
Thank you.
It's a small, it's a small sort of extension and no objections.
Okay, that's fine. Does anyone else have anything else to say or shall we go to the vote?
I've had my hand up for a while.
I beg you, I beg your pardon. I was just trying to see if it was me that was making the noise Val, so yeah, you carry on.
It was, it's only a comment. And that is, I'm surprised that they've had to get full planning. I would have thought this might have come under permitted development. It's just a comment. Thank you. Oh, for goodness sake, go away. Sorry. Something on screen. Oh, it's the rabbit, is it?
Oh, no.
Okay. Councillor Taylor?
Okay, so it's a second floor extension. It's for an additional bathroom. Second floor extensions aren't permitted development.
Ah, that accounts for it, right.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we've had a proposal and we've had a seconder. Is everybody happy to go to a vote? There's no one else wanting to speak? So we'll have a, a vote if that's okay. Thank you. To accept. Thank you.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Right. We're heading back to Holcombe for the next one. Seven Russell Avenue. And again, this is one that we have seen, I think at least, I made, yeah, I looked at the address. We've had at least three visits to this address for planning. This is the high part of Holcombe. And I think the, the owners of the property are looking to make the best of the sea view that they can see from their roof. And they're looking at a front dorma with roof lights. Members might recall a previous application which was for a Juliet balcony where the dorma window is at the moment. Councillor Taylor? You have your blue hand.
I'm, I'm not sure whether we've seen it. About your superior knowledge, Chair. I thought it was twice before and this might be the third time and perhaps third time lucky.
You might be right.
I, I think it's, it's a more restrained planning application than we've seen before.
It is.
From this property. I think the, the dorma is, is more in keeping. It's, it's fairly small windows. I, I don't know that I have a particular objection. It's, it, in, in the sense that it, it is not, it's not a listed building. It's a, it's a 30s building with, which, which is attractive in its own right. I don't think the dorma adds much to it. But on the other hand, you know, I, 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 I can't say that I've got, got a violent objection to it.
Thank you for that. Charity, I think. Thank you. Any other members with a view?
Was that an objection? Was that a, a, a proposal for no objection?
I'm not sure. Councillor Taylor, was it?
Yes.
No, he's not sure either. Okay.
I'll propose no objection.
Thank you. Anyone happy to second that? Councillor Lauthar? Happy to second that. Thank you. Any other members would like to, to, to talk about this? We have, as I say, in the past, we have seen where this dorma window was, there was a much larger window with a Juliet balcony. So I think they have made an adjustment to, to their plans for this as the last, as, as it didn't get through last time. This seems to me more reasonable and in keeping. So that's the only thing I'd want to say. I'm happy to take to the vote if no one else wants to speak. Councillor Morehead, you have your, your non-electronic hand.
I've got the electronic one up as well.
Yes, you have. Thank you.
This was just, I agree that it's, it's a bit better than it was last time. I just wanted to ask whether any neighbours have complained. And to repeat, am I right in thinking that this is uphill? It's across the road from the downhill neighbours, so it's not really
That's right.
directly overlooking whatever. Right.
They're, they're going for the view over the sea from their roof. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on this one? Or we have a proposal and a second in front of us so we can go to the vote, but I'm conscious of the fact I don't want to rush members if there's anyone else wants to say anything. No? Okay, well, we'll go to the vote on this one then please. So the proposal is to accept as, as set out. Thank you. Vote to accept please. Okay. That's accepted. Thank you, Yola. So now we're going to travel to Middlewood in Cockwood. And we have a rear dorma creating another bedroom at the top of the building. And quite unusually, but does tell you about the topography in Cockwood, a bridge going on to the garden.
Just for those not familiar with the territory, this is built quite high up. There's a, a lot of steps and a steep path going up to this house. It's built into the side of the hill as all of these are quite a way back. It's well hidden from everything else. It's, it's, the, the gardens behind are typically quite long and quite steep, so I can well understand the need for the, the bridge out on to the, the garden. It's a common design around in this, in these parts.
Yeah. It's quite a nice design to, to take your morning breakfast, I guess, on the terrace, if it is going from the bedroom that's going to be in that room. Councillor Morehead, you have your electronic hand raised. Please carry on to speak.
Just, I have looked at this in detail and I do know the, the area well, as do others.
You've, you've.
And it seems to me, I don't know with the current owners, to make a house for life, if you like. It's going to make it usable to use their ground, whatever their age or mobility. And I think it's a very neat design.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it seems to, it seems to suit the, the current property, doesn't it? It seems to fit with it. Councillor Taylor?
If, if that was a proposal from councillor Morehead, I would certainly second it.
Councillor Morehead? You're muted. We can't hear you. We can't hear you, Val. Hear you. We can't hear you.
I'm happy to make that a proposal that.
Thank you. Your internet's breaking up a little bit, sorry.
That.
Dear councillor Morehead, frozen.
She has.
A frozen.
Proposal seconded.
So we will, we will take that as a proposal, Val. And your internet is, is a little bit intermittent at the moment. So you have a very nice smile on your face at the moment, so that's fine. Councillor Taylor, you have seconded that proposal, is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other members would like to speak about this one? If you will have a chance to have a look at it, hopefully. No? No other comments to make? Okay, we will, we will go to the vote on this one. This is a vote to accept the proposal as, as set out. Thank you. Thank you, members. Now we're going to go to Alta Vista Close in Timmouth. This looks like it's a property that's already actually been prepared and done. And this is a certificate for lawfulness of the proposed works. Okay, so it isn't actually done. Altering the existing hip roof with an existing dorma and a Dutch hip. So we're going to learn about what a Dutch hip is. I don't know where the site location plan has disappeared. Hopefully it is remembered though from the website. Gosh. And this is a plan that's all in together, isn't it?
Right, yeah. So it's the new houses basically, isn't it?
Alta Vista.
Yeah, they're, they're not being built.
We just got, we just got the map just on that last.
Yeah. There's four new or two new houses that were built about a year ago.
Yeah.
On that bit of big piece of land that they had up there.
So we've been seeing a few of these kind of hit roofs, haven't we? Councillor Taylor?
Okay, so I don't know what's Dutch about it. What I do like to see is, for a change, we've got hand drawn plans here.
Yes, it looks nice, doesn't it?
Certainly the plans proposed, I don't have a problem with. Certainly the plans proposed, I don't have a problem with. But it's not the new houses. It's the, it's one of the very large, semi-detached, where it's a dorma bungalow, but it's actually on three floors to the front, which are next to the new houses.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
I don't know what other members think about it. I think it looks quite neat.
I might have a comment.
Yeah, okay. councillor Heath?
I hope I got this right. A clarification on a Dutch hip. A conventional one is the hip goes right along to the end wall. Whereas a Dutch hip is angled back at an angle. I think that's what the difference is. But if I'm wrong.
Isn't that the difference between a gable and a hip roof?
Well, yeah, sometimes I think they call them the same thing. A gable end is basically the hip top of the roof goes right to the edge of the brickwork. It just drops straight down, whereas a Dutch one goes back at an angle, like an old barn.
Okay.
Word for word what Mr Google says as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
Well done from Mr Google. Okay, that's fun. Do members, are members happy with this proposal? Any other points that they would like to maze? When I checked the item, there were no comments or objections on the actual item.
It seems fine.
councillor Morehead?
Just, just a brief one. It seems to me it's on a big site. It's not imposing on anyone else. And what it does do is provide a little bit more headroom to make a bigger room under the roof. And I just see no reason to object to it.
Yeah, I agree. If there was anything from the neighbours, I would have concerns. There doesn't seem to be anything at all. So, yeah, that's fine. Are members happy for me to propose from the chair? That will make a change. I'm happy to propose from the chair. So that we accept as set out. So I'll do that and we'll take a vote on that, if that's okay, members. Thank you. Accepted as set out. Thank you very much.
Chair, before we begin the next item, might I suggest that you move a half an hour extension?
Yes, we're two minutes to that actual thing. I was going to go for that. We've got two items and an appeal to do. Are members happy for us to extend the meeting by half an hour, should we need to? Thank you. Okay. Okay, let's go on to item 200534. This is Sea Light, 28 The Strand. And it's really a change of use that they're looking for. There's quite a lot of paperwork for this actual item online. No objections. Apart from the, there are some notes from the actual applicants themselves who are, I'd say, reading between the lines a little bit frustrated at the whole process, but that's fine. Change of use of property from A4 public house to C3 dwelling. So this is making a building that's on the High Street on our Strand. And obviously a place that's been a pub for a long time. It was the Prince Philip or something like that, I forget the name. Then it was the hole in the wall. And they're now proposing that it becomes a dwelling. So we've got all of the plans in front of us. I can see councillor Morehead has her blue hand up. councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Just to say, there is a little bit of a history here. I suspect that this has come in for a reason. I am aware of a planning application to redevelop this property, I think as three or four units. I can't remember now. Because I looked it up for another reason, just because of the pavement outside.
Yeah.
And I suspect they've come up against this and found that it hasn't had the change originally. And I would guess that's why this is in. But that's a supposition.
Yeah. We go on what we have in front of us, but I appreciate your point from that point of view. It is quite a large property, as you can see from the actual floor plan. Obviously being a pub for all years, it is. And it's on a sloping site, because obviously it lines Lawn Hill down to the Strand. But I think the owner of the property says themselves, they have lived here. It's a family home. And they have lived here for, I think it's at least three years as a family home. And I think they did have a small concession as a cafe when they first moved into the property, which they mentioned in their application that they ran at a loss. But they're now looking to actually live here. So hence the change. councillor Tamlin, you have your hand raised. Sorry, I didn't see your electronic hand raised because of the display. So let's see if we can get you muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Well done, Carol. Carry on.
Yeah, I'm not surprised at this application. And I don't think the people of Dawlish are surprised. They all said it's going to eventually be flat. It became a retail, didn't it? With Sea Light, with a little cafe and things, and that didn't work.
Cafe and gallery, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to be surprised that they're looking for flats. And that's the way it's going as well, unfortunately.
Well, they're looking at change of use at the moment, from a public house to a dwelling. And the whole house is a house, but it is a large house that could potentially be split in various ways, I suppose, from that point of view. councillor Heath, you have your electronic hand.
Yeah. Could we go back and look at a slide? I just want to get the exact position in the Strand where it lies. Because it's just trying to picture.
Literally right at the bottom of Lawn Hill. Yeah. Next to the post office.
Right, next to the post, so it's facing the lawn.
Yes.
Yeah.
The front of the property, when you see the actual photographs, there you go.
Right, is that one where your cursor is? Or?
No, it's that green one there, the large
That, oh, right. I'm, yeah, tiny little picture, isn't it?
And it has a garden at the top. It has a yard garden at the top too, as well.
Right, so, yeah, as you say, it's quite a big building. But at the moment, they're asking for just one building. They're not asking for it to be subdivided, is that correct?
No, that's right. What they also state that they're not looking to rent out rooms as an Airbnb as well. As I believe that there has been. I think that's something they've looked at before, if memory serves. Those are in the notes on the application.
Right. Should that be part of it or not? Because obviously, I know lots of hotels and bed and breakfast places that have been established don't like them. But of course, that's business, unfortunately.
It's not for us to make a judgment on that, councillor Heath. We're looking at what's before us at the moment. councillor Gary Taylor? And then councillor Morehead?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do feel for people who have given it a go and who haven't been able to make it work as they originally intended. There's a couple of things here. Most of the frontage for this house, of course, is on Lawn Hill. It's got extensive frontage to Lawn Hill. With just a small frontage on to the Strand. But the Strand is a primary shopping area. And from that point of view, I think it'd be difficult to support a change of use for the whole building. What's something I've been discussing with my other hat on is live-work units for Tebridge. And I'm just wondering whether this is something that we might be able to coalesce around as approval for use as a live-work unit with the front unit to be retained. They've got it down as a studio, a studio painting room.
That's right. The lady of the house is an artist. And that was, her work and her gallery was formed part of the cafe, I think, when it was opened as a cafe.
So that front room was still retained in some active use, other than residential. I think, I certainly wouldn't have an objection to that. So I don't know what other members think about it. I'd like to understand that.
Any other thoughts? councillor Alva has got hands raised. Thank you. councillor Alva?
Yeah, I'm just going on the application. And the application is retention of change of use of property from an A4 public house to a dwelling.
That's right.
Nothing to do with whether they use the front for this, the front. That is what they're asking for.
That's right.
In the conservation area.
Yeah.
And that, I noticed, is just down as full. And it should be mentioned that it should be con net as well. But they didn't do it. I propose that we just accept it.
Is that a proposal, councillor Alva?
Yeah.
Okay. So you propose as set out, as it were? Okay. Is anyone happy to second councillor Alva's proposal? councillor Tamlin, did you want to say something or you happened to second?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you.
I'm happy to second.
Okay. So we have a proposal and a second in front of us, members. Does anyone else want anything, any other things they want to say? Before we go for a vote? councillor Heath?
Just one quick comment before we vote.
Yeah.
Obviously, if the others haven't made a go of it, it doesn't mean to say that somebody else might not be able to. So I'm taking a point, councillor Wrigley, that if we do lose this to a complete house, it will never come back as a shop. Now, obviously with what's going on in the country, will shops be, I think, of the past? We don't know. So all we can do is go on a gut feeling, whether we think it's right for the High Street. Will it look right? And it won't change the overall design. I assume they're not going to change the design. If they are, I'd be against it. Are we clear on if the design on the front's going to change? Are they going to change the windows or anything like this?
We have no notification from that on that case. They did have a, it almost looks like a window design there. And they've incorporated a door into that, but I don't think they used that. The main entrance to the property is halfway up Lawn Hill, which is a large door there. I think they've got another small door a bit further down as well. Yes, as has been said, it's quite a substantial property.
Okay.
councillor Wrigley?
It does state that it is a grade two listed building.
It is.
It is a grade two listed building, even though they are changing the use of the building at this point. It doesn't give them permission to change the external features, to remove the fact of it being a shop, to remove the shop windows or anything like that. So as such, they would need an alter, another set of planning to make any changes to the building. To do that, this is purely allowing them to change its use from a public house, which it clearly hasn't been for I think the hole in the wall was still there when I moved into Dawlish 20 years ago. But it wasn't long after that that it went away. And prior to
But it was a youth club as well.
It was a youth club. And it clearly hasn't had the appropriate change of use permission that it should have done.
Yeah.
So I personally would have no objection to this because it's not doing anything other than change of use. When it comes to change of use, that's the bit that would then remove it from having any, when it comes to any further structural changes, that would be what would take it out of having any potential to return to retail or some other full traffic.
Okay.
Because it is a prime place.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Wrigley. councillor Morehead, you've been wriggling your hand at me for a little while. Thank you for being
I only wanted to say, yes, Martin spotted this now, that the clue is in the word retention. It has become a residential property. And obviously, this is in retrospect, in a way. And as you say, all we're dealing with at the moment is what's in front of us. So I can't see there's any objection to it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a proposal and a second for acceptance as set out. So let's go to the vote. I think everyone's had a say that we wanted to, so we'll vote on it. To accept. Thank you. Anyone wanting to vote against that? Anyone wanting to abstain? Thank you. Right. Thank you, members. Let's go on to our last one to look at, although we have got appeal to note as well. This is 2001043. And it's Leyfield Walk and a single-storey flat roof extension. Again, I haven't been able to see any comments for this one or objections. Do members know whereabouts this is? It's Gate House Hill, going down to Newlands. This is a property on quite a sloping site that backs on to Gate House Hill. There you go. councillor Martin Wrigley, you have your blue hand up.
That was from before, I think, Chair.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Okay. I will, there you go, you've put it down. But we now have councillor Val Morehead's hand up. If you'd like to speak, please, Val, do.
I have looked at this in some detail and aided by the photographs as well. It's a very reasonable extension. It doesn't seem to impact directly on any neighbours.
No.
Personally, I wouldn't see any objections to it. But that's up to everybody.
Okay. Okay. It does seem, I mean, from my perspective, I see it as quite a reasonable proposal from that point of view as well. I haven't seen any objections. And as you said, it's the extension's not going to be seen or going to affect any of the neighbours from that point of view, which will probably explain why there aren't any comments or objections to it from the neighbours. Do members have any other points to make on this one at all? No?
No.
Okay.
I'll propose a no objection.
Thank you. Is anyone happy? Two hands went up in the air then. Gary, I think you beat Val by a whisker. Are you happy to second councillor Wrigley's proposal? Thank you. Okay. If there's no other points to be made, we will go to a vote on this one as accepted as set out. Okay, so we'll take a vote. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, members, for your patience this evening. We've also got to now note an appeal that's been received for the land at Upper Longlands in Dawlish, and it's appealed against refusal of planning permission. I don't know if you've got any items, any artwork for this at all, Yola? But we're really just noting it, I think, from that point of view.
Yeah, I mean, just to remind members, obviously, sometimes it is a question of noting. Sometimes we're asked for representations if there's anything different to what's been said before. But just to remind you that this was one that was actually requested to go to committee if it was minded to approve. So actually, the refusal of this is in line with what this committee had requested. So that there isn't a need to add anything else other than noting it.
That's fine. It's what we hope to, well, it's, yeah, okay, that's fine. Enough said from that point of view. Okay, thank you for your time. And I know it was a little bit of an interesting one with people coming in and out. But thank you for your patience, members, for tonight's meeting. And I declare this meeting closed.
Thank you, Chair, for managing us so well.